Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorangecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, could we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, welcome to the July 16, 2014, Lorraine County Board of Commissioners' meeting. It looks like Tim Kilblad, our dog warden, is going to do the dog, Tom?
Yes.
Good morning, everybody. We have a five-year-old beagle, already fixed, all current on its shots, ready to go. Name is Chopper, it was a surrender, the lady could no longer keep the dog. So it's ready to go today. We have 28 dogs in the kennel, so come on down, take a look. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Tim.
Teresa, can we just go right into the Children's Services presentation?
We don't have a purr today, I assume.
Pardon me?
No purr.
Right, there's nobody here.
Today we have an appointment with Lorraine County Children's Services on their levy request of 1.5 mils renewal with a .3 increase for the November 4, 2014 ballot for five years.
Bill?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yep, alright, good, thanks, guys. As you know, I'm Bill Harper, and I appreciate the opportunity to serve as Chair of the Lorraine County Children's Services Board. And I want to tell you, things are going well. I appreciate the people that you've appointed to the Board. We spent five hours last night in some governance training and committed to another two full days in early September, so this group is going to work. And it's a nice cohesive group at this point and very engaged in the work of Children's Services, so thank you for that. Because I know you, you know, put a lot of thought into, you know, who would be the best people to serve, so appreciate that opportunity. And I just want to start the conversation today by saying that we unanimously have requested the Lorraine County Commissioners to place the levy that funds the services to abused and neglected children and the county's portion for the Ohio Bureau for Children with Medical Handicaps on the November 2014 election ballot. And we humbly request for a 1.5 renewal with a .3 mil additional. I'd like Scott Ferris, our Executive Director, to have an opportunity now to share with you some background information for you to take into consideration of this request. Scott?
Welcome.
Good morning.
Morning, Scott.
Perfect timing, Bill. Yes, Lorraine County Children's Services respectfully requests the Lorraine County Commissioners to place our levy that funds both services to abused and neglected children and the county's portion of the Ohio's Bureau for Children with Medical Handicaps on the November 2014 general election ballot. This request is for 1.5 mil renewal with a .3 mil additional. Currently, the levy generates approximately 51% of the revenue needed to fund services to our communities' abused and neglected children. In 2013, the local levy dollars accounted for approximately $8.7 million of a total $17 million annual budget. Lorraine County Children's Services is a nationally accredited child welfare agency, one of the few to meet or exceed all federal government's outcomes, goals recently profiled by the National Casey Family Programs for high-quality and innovative services and is staffed by well-educated and well-trained caseworkers. On average, we receive over 4,000 referrals each year concerning the treatment of children. Over our current levy cycle, starting in 2009, Lorraine County Children's Services has experienced a 15% reduction in funds available to care for our community's maltreated children. That breakdown is a 23% reduction in federal funding, a 17% reduction in state funding. And as an aside, in every opportunity that I have in a public forum, I stress that Ohio continues to rank last when it comes to state support for local child welfare services. This is determined by the Center for Community Solutions in Cleveland and the Public Children's Services Association in Ohio. So approximately for every dollar that's spent locally, less than six cents comes from a state source. And finally, for local revenue, we have received or we experienced an 8% reduction in funds generated by the current levy. In response to lower revenue, Children's Services has reduced staff and ancillary programs to assure that core services to abused and neglected children remain unaffected. Since 2009, we have eliminated 38 positions, 28 of which were bargaining and 10 which were non-bargaining. These reductions were carefully considered to maintain critical staffing levels necessary to both maintain services and not affect safety for the children we serve. At the same time, reports to our agency from people in Lorraine County who are concerned about the safety of a child have increased. In 2009, we received approximately 3,800 referrals, and since 2012, referrals have increased to more than 4,000. That's one referral about every two and a half hours, seven days a week, 24 hours a day. Passing this levy will partially restore funding. We will still be operating at a lower annual budget than before our current levy cycle started. This levy will not restore all funding, but will provide the necessary funds to meet community expectations and provide mandated services. What does this mean for taxpayers? For each $100,000 in assessed property value, the 1.5 mil renewal with the .3 additional levy will only cost an additional 88 cents per month. This levy will not enable the agency to grow, expand, or restore the cuts that had been already made over the last cycle, but will help keep core services intact with communities' abused and neglected children. Our commitment to quality and continuous improvement is only surpassed by our commitment to abusing and neglecting children we serve. Our practices, services, and initiatives continue to meet high national standards. We take our responsibility to our community and to our clients seriously, and we welcome the opportunity to demonstrate our goal to do the right things right, the first time, every time, on time, and one child at a time. We provide on behalf of Lorraine County prompt investigations of allegations of child abuse and neglect, high-quality protective services to our children and their families, integrated and caring foster care and adoption services. As you already know, our organization, including its fiscal management, operations, programs, and services, is open for your review. Indeed, since 1999, we have earned and maintained national accreditation through the Council on Accreditation for Children and Family Services. We also are monitored regularly by the Ohio Department of Job and Family Services and the Federal Department of Health and Human Services. Lorraine County Children's Service is an important part of the Children's Safety Net. In order to continue to meet our obligations and to help the community keep its commitment to the well-being of its children, we respectfully request that you place the 1.5 mil renewal with .3 mil additional levy that funds vital services to abused and neglected children on the November 2014 general election ballot. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Scott. I'd like to thank the Board too, Bill, your leadership, turning the Board around. I mean, we've got a good group of staff down there, so I see there's a change in leadership that's engaged with the community now, trying to, so welcome to Lorraine County again, Scott.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have a question on it, and again, thanks for the change in leadership. Here's my concern, there's a... I'm sorry? The department had a huge back black eye under the previous administration. Expenditures that weren't justified, budgetary issues as far as going through, trying to give huge increases when they knew that they were going to be short, that they would be running into red in the next year. I believe in the program, I believe in the support and the employees that you have there. My concern is by going out with an increase on this and with the public still having all those articles that were written in the back of their mind, is this the right thing to do? What have you done to justify, to show the public that you're turning things around right now?
Well, let me get that, I'm celebrating my first month anniversary, but I know the Board is, the Board has been engaged with leadership of the agency, as you highlighted, a number of reduced positions over the years, and really reducing services and programs that were not the core mandated services. There's been no cuts in areas that would prevent concerns around child safety or leave a child at risk. The agency and the Board are engaged and continuing to look at ways that we can maximize current resources and continue to partner and engage the members of the Community Safety Net to assure proper services to children. I know for, there was a couple of years where there was no salary increases for staff. Last year was the first one, and in the last two or three years. It's an interesting, we, the Board and the staff have made a determination, looked at a couple levy scenarios. I'd like to point out that we're not requesting to restore all the federal, state, and local funding we lost, but this is a request that we feel will help us continue to meet our mandated services for the next five years. We're not replacing all funding, but just the funding we need that we feel we want to be come 2018, '19.
You know, Commissioner, we've seen a number of folks come for longer than five-year levies, the norm's now becoming about 10 years, and we saw that with mental health and perpetuity levies with the DD. You know, the five years would give them a great opportunity to overcome some of the things in the past that have been plaguing the organization and troubling the Board, quite frankly, because we've had multiple talks on some of the issues there. But generally speaking, going out for the first chance to introduce the levy gives them additional opportunity, creates that opportunity later on for acceptance by the public.
We are going a year early, we will not, if this successfully passed, we'll not begin collection in 2016. So it gives us an opportunity to continue to, you know, work on any issues that you want to bring to our attention.
Okay, just last question, because, and it wasn't a huge dollar amount, but it was something that was really bothering people because I've been asked about it. The Board is no longer taking paid lunches and going out, correct? Okay, alright, that's a start. And Scott, I met you, we talked when you were first being interviewed, I have a high level of confidence in your ability, I just wanted to bring it up, you know, and let you know that people are still discouraged by what happened previously, and it's not fair to point the finger at you, but I do have high hopes that you're going to change this around for us.
I definitely appreciate that, and I do want to reiterate and point out that, in a sense, we're an entitlement service. If a child, if someone from our community brings us a concern, we have to address it, we can't say we reach our quota for the month and that's it. So, you know, we, in our projections, we do have to project current trends that a number of reports are going to gradually continue over the next five years.
You know, as a matter for the public, because they're not aware sometimes of what you do, because you have other responsibilities, one of those responsibilities is appointing the Children's Services Board and also determining the size and composition of that Board. And over the last three years, you have reconstituted the entire Board, reduced the number of members on the Board, and brought in professionals from the community to reestablish a governance model over the Board. And Bill had those people there, and I think till about nine o'clock last night, going through the first wave of governance training. I would say that this is the first time I've seen any Board or governance training on the Children's Services Board since I've been here. So I think that the moves that you have made in conjunctions with the moves that they're making are really going to align this agency well and reposition it back into the community as the premier agency that it once was.
I have a lot of confidence in that, like, I'm very happy with what the Board has done down there, done a great job chairing it, and we've got it to where people are very engaged, and I look forward to Scott leading the agency to better times, so I'm more than willing to make a motion to send this to the ballot.
And I'll second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Back to work, guys.
Now, the work starts, right?
Right.
Take care, Bill. Madam Clerk?
Under Resolutions Number One, Investments?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Propriation?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Travel?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners, authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdictional Lorraine County Commissioners.
Mr. Cordes, what do you have for us today?
I have quite a few potential hires at Job and Family Services, the Kennel, Community Development, Golden Acres, so we have a little bit to talk about. Also update you on our ongoing, it's too premature, you can't be peeking. The ongoing levy negotiation between United Steelworkers of America and our 911 personnel. So those two issues, and maybe if time permits, I'll update you on a sale of a piece of real estate that I'm working on the negotiations with. All those topics are allowable under the Sunshine Law for Executive Session Discussion, so I'd ask at the conclusion of our regular Board meeting today, we go into Executive Session and talk about those items that I have specified. Thank you.
We may have to do lunch at the diner downstairs.
We may, if we stay long enough. Have you eaten from down there yet?
Oh, many times, it's very good.
I think it's tough cabbage today.
Tough cabbage today? Well, we have to take a look at that. Remember, tonight's the best of Lorraine County, so don't fill up too early.
Can't make it, wish I could, it was delicious last time. Okay.
Approve and read the minutes of July 9?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Adopt the fiscal year 2015 Lorraine County tax budget and prove it submitted in the tax booklet.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under Community Development, award groom as CT consultants mentor in the amount of $9,000 for design, bid documents, project oversight, and inspection for CDBG funded North Bridgeville Senior Center door, ADA door, and parking lot improvements to be paid from the capital improvement construction account.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the Crime Lab, request Lorraine County Auditor pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 307.45A7 to certify Lorraine County Board of Commissioners the total current tax valuation of the county and the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated for five years for the county crime lab with 0.08 mils additional to be on the November 4, 2014 ballot for duplicate year 2014 collectible in 2015.
Mr. Cordes?
Thank you, Commissioner. What I'm asking or requesting here is that we just certify the potential available resources from the Order of this Office. You'll have some time whether, to have a discussion whether to place this on the ballot moving forward. I know we were unsuccessful in the May primary. Like with the next issue that's coming before you devote on, we may do better in a general election with more voter turnout. We have not done well with transit in the primary. The Crime Lab wasn't as resoundly defeated, but it also wasn't embraced in the primary. It may be that a larger look from the community is necessary to gain support. I'm not a really big guru when it comes to positioning these things, but I think that I needed to present the issue to you, this is the last date that we can request the Order of Certification, but there's still a few dates. Madam Clerk, is that accurate? That date can decide to place it over with, on the ballot, is that correct?
Next week?
Excuse me?
Next week, the week after, at the very latest.
Okay, so you have some time, this is just to get the dollar value.
Have we heard anything from the Sheriff on the investigation in the other department?
No, I have not. I know that they were, they were bringing in some forensic specialists, the last time we got an update on that. We do know, because we were, we were told that, because we requested it, that they bifurcated this process and they've removed the Crime Lab from, from the investigation. Can't really speak much more to it, because we gained that
Right.
from, from Executive Session to, to inform us of the progress. I can ask the Sheriff, though, or at least the investigators, to come back in and rebrief the Board as to the current progress, if you'd like.
I would. What I would like to see before I make a decision, before putting on the ballot, is if this is going to be cleared up, you know, in a week, a month? Because the general public kind of tied the two together.
I think they, I think we were tainted a bit by that, I have to agree, and we got that, we got that release of, of the Drug and Crime Lab late, really within a few days of the ballot, the primary election, rather. So that did give us a lot of time to launchpad off of that. What I'd like to see us do this time, because we have a clear line of sight to some of the issues, I want to work within the framework of the Chiefs Association, the Coroner, and several people that rely heavily on the Lab and the working there to generate at least a grassroots groundswell of support. It's important that the organizations and the police departments and some of the courts that do use these resources generate at least some conversation amongst their peers to support this levy, and I'm going to work on that. Last time, we couldn't work on that, because we were waiting for the investigation to be done, and we didn't get, what was it, a week before, we finally got at least the Crime Lab portion of it cleared. So I think we'll be a little bit stronger in the, in the general election this year, and we're going to put on a stronger grassroots campaign.
Concern, again, I know a lot of police officers, family, and that, and they're still waiting to wait for that last piece, even though it's not tied together.
I agree.
They want to see what comes out of the investigation.
I understand, Commissioner, I'll get, I'll get, I'll talk to Kavanaugh and have him come in and at least brief you. Hopefully, he can give you some news of when they're going to complete that investigation.
Okay.
Also moved.
Second?
Any further discussion? Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under Job and Family, enter into plan and authorize transfer funds allocated by the Ohio Department of Job and Family Services for state fiscal year 14 in the amount not to exceed $500,000 from the Income Maintenance Control Fund to the Child Support Enforcement Fund in accordance with the OAC 51019605. CSEA shall expend all funds to cover any ceiling excess for state match.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under Sanitary, certify the delinquent sanitary sewer accounts to the auditor for the collection on the tax duplicate for the year 2014, collection 2015.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under Solid Waste, abolish the classification of solid waste specialist 2 and solid waste project manager due to a lack of work.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion.
Yeah, let's just talk about, this is just changing classifications of our employees to better reflect the work they do now versus 20-plus years ago when these positions were created. Mr. Bailey?
Commissioners, what we've done, we've reclassified all the employees upstairs in more professional positions, and that more really reflects what they're doing, all right, for, for the county. And these are the old positions they were in, and now we no longer need them, so we need to get them abolished and gone.
Yeah, this has been an ongoing process, we've been working on for several months. There's been some change in personnel, some retirements. There's no layoffs coming from this. About a year ago, Mr. Bailey and I sat down, had a long conversation about what do these people were performing and what they weren't. And employees do better when they have a clear expectation of what their responsibilities are, and those responsibilities were so diluted in the old classification that there wasn't a clear understanding. So we decided to tighten that up, and we're working on it for some time, and I think generally you're going to have a better department from this reorganization. But once again, there is only one attrition through a retirement, there is no additional reductions anticipated because of this realignment.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Authorize the additional $7,613 for dumpsters provided to communities due to the severe storm on May 12, and will be paid from the disaster management account.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion.
Mr. Bailey, while I have you out there, again, I had a discussion with Patty Echo from Sheffield Township, and she's going to be sending invoices over to you where they picked up their own, in regards to all the damage they had, and you said that wouldn't be a problem with reimbursement, so we'll probably have to do another one.
We'll be back down at that point in time, whenever Patty gets that information to me. You know, the bridge building between the county and the political subdivisions, sometimes, Sandy may comment that we made a lot of strides in that area in the last couple, three years. I still find sometimes there's bridges that need to be built. And we had a lot of participation, and I've been, I'm not, this is not my first go-around with disaster debris, all right, I've been there and done that. But you do have to cooperate with the EMA, you have to cooperate and work together as a team and put together a EMA proposal that gets qualified and funded from the state and federal government. You know, that's what it's all about. And I would need to thank Mike Challenger and Beverly Gardner. They both stayed after on May 16 and helped me roll the containers out on the weekend. And I know that was tough on them, it's a Friday evening, you want to go home, and I got people in my house calling political subdivision personnel to get the container fold out.
Yeah, I wasn't very nice to you, was I? No. Keith responded, we had a very, we had a significant crisis in our community. It was, it was, the deployment lagged a little bit, there was a little bit of confusion, and I talked to Keith late on Friday, and he pulled the team together, and they got it done over the weekend. I was very proud of them, very pleased with the, with the team effort. For the public's update, this is only an additional funding, there was $25,000 of previous funding that was used to the deployment of the dumpsters, so that they could put all that debris from, from the, from the storm damage in there. So it was a really, really great team effort, and some of the other communities out there really worked well with our folks here.
Yeah, they sure did. Beverly Gardner managed this entire switching out containers and everything, talking to all the political subdivisions, so she did a great job in managing this disaster, so to speak, so, great, hats off to her.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Engage in legal representation from Brous McDowell, Cleveland on an as-needed basis to provide various services, to include but not limited to solid waste plan legal review, drafting and reviewing rules and claims.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Any discussion in regards to having us, we had to go out for expert legal counsel?
We've always had expert private legal counsel, we made a change, a recommendation of Jerry and some others, that we looked to make a change. We interviewed a couple firms that submitted as proposals that we requested, and we selected this firm to represent us and do our plan review and a rule review in the future.
It should be done by December.
Yep.
Yeah, Commissioners, as an aside, during the interview process, we interviewed some very fine, talented folk from different firms. Brous McDowell was very aggressive in their cost structure with regard to their proposal, but it wasn't just about the cost, although when they came in, we were very surprised at how aggressive the fee was going to be reduced for the legal services. And also, Brous does have a satellite office and a presence in Lorraine County where some of the other firms did, so that gave it a little bit of a, of an edge. And Cleveland isn't that far away, so we'll be working with people from the local office in Cleveland.
Is Greenberg part of this organization?
Mike, Mike Greenberg is not part of the organization, but, but I did get comments from him with regard to the people we interviewed and his past workings with them, and he gave us good recommendations with the person from Brous McDowell that we'll be working with.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Gaski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Before you sit down, Keith, I think Mr. Cordes, you sent an email around asking if we want to do something for the fifty thousand.
I got it right here. I saw your rocking chair that you thought maybe from the last time.
What do you think?
I was going to talk with Keith. I think we should do something. Well, you brought it up. I thought maybe you'd bring it up on the visit, but this is a great time.
Well, I figured since we're talking about solid waste.
You know, fifty thousand.
Car coming through the collection center.
Knocking on the door.
So.
Month of August, Eric.
I think, I think maybe it should even be a little bigger than.
Bigger than a rocking chair? How about a swing?
We seldom, we seldom get a lot of credit for the successes that we have, and we've had quite a few of them. This is another one of those that, that, that has kind of fallen under the radar screen because it works so well, it's sunk into the woodwork. Fifty thousand vehicles through that center in the last couple of years is amazing. Keith has done a great job. We, we struggled in the beginning to get that thing set up and moving, and it continues to expand, and it's become a, a resource to most everybody in the community one way or another. But whatever you want to do, I just think that we should do something to, to mark that milestone.
Think of something good.
Let me know.
Well, ideas?
I, I'm grasping at you guys for a little bit of idea this time.
Ask Tiffany and Brandy. They'll come up with something.
All right, I, I'll ask the ladies, all right? Thanks.
Nothing but positive feedback regarding the collection center, always.
Well, you know, the revenue was significant. We, we've suffered some setbacks in the revenue in solid waste, like everywhere. Keith and I had talked several times about a potential location a little further south, and we scouted some things. The money just wasn't there, as Commissioner Kelo knows from being on the committee. I'm hopeful that in the future, if revenues increase and things change, that we'll be able to offer an additional center further out in the community. We've also have discussed having a joint center with Erie and Ron County somewhere on the west, southwestern end of the county, and maybe we can have a tri-county collection agency and do an intergovernmental agreement like that. So the, the better this one does, the more we continue to look at options and alternatives to, to reproduce that success and get more people recycling.
The cars coming through, are we counting the cars that are coming through to pick up the computers for that other program that we?
That program is intermittent, you know, LCC three is doing about a hundred students a year, so they still come back and get their computers as they complete their coursework.
But that's not counted in the fifty thousand?
No, 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 no. These are people that come in with materials to be serviced, all right?
Good.
All right?
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Under transit, request Lorraine County Auditor pursuant to Ohio Revice Code fifty-seven oh five point nineteen Q and fifty-seven oh five point one nine one to certify Lorraine County Board of Commissioners the total current tax valuation of the county and the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated for five years for Lorraine County Transit with zero point zero six five mils additional to be on the November fourth, two thousand fourteen ballot for duplicate year two thousand fourteen, collectible two thousand fifteen.
Mr. Cordes, I know this is taking transit back to the ballot. Has there been any discussion with the group who led the charge before Commissioner Kokowski, any discussions as of yet?
We haven't, but I intend to do so. We have a week or so before we have to make an actual decision. Just like the crime lab, we have to get it down to the auditor's office.
I, I'm, I'm hoping for their support. They, they have, we have not communicated with them. Again, this is a placeholder, so we can, we have some time to move forward. We do need to have a discussion with them. They were a very good group. They worked very closely with us, and, and I was proud to be part of that, that initiative. That said, I know that there was some thinking on their part to wait till next year to the primary, but I will tell you that the urgency is more significant than waiting almost a year to go back to the taxpayers. We're, we're not in good shape in transit, and we continue to lose funding, and if we don't gain match money, we're, we're, we're not going to be lined up for future funding. It's not as easy as getting match money and then all of a sudden you turn the spigot of dollars on. It, it's, it's a, they have a three- to five-year process that you have to go through, and we're, we're, we're in very, very dangerous territory right now for future funding. We, we need to do something. And, and I know the board has struggled with budgetary issues, and has been as generous with transit as they, they could be, but, but we're, we're, we're at a point where not only have we lost five million, we're not getting five million, we're not getting additional funds. The communities around us are receiving those funds, and Commissioner Williams was with me when they thanked us from Sandusky for providing them additional funds for their buses, because the money came out of Lorraine County and went to another community that, that, that provided match money for that. I don't want to continue to donate what should be Lorraine County's resources to other communities. I, I know they didn't mean to, they weren't trying to be insulting. It was, it was, it was meant to be humorous, but it was, it was, it was depressing at the same time.
They also have Sandusky. They're going through that regional approach, so.
Madam Clerk? Also moved.
Okay.
Second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Kelo.
Aye.
Ms. Gaski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams. Under common pleas, declaration and request the sheet metal, air, rail, and transportation workers local thirty-three for recognition of on behalf of the employees of Lorraine County Adult Probation Department and Lorraine County Court of Common Pleas.
Mr. Cordes, I left that full resolution stating.
Madam Clerk, you have the resolution?
I'd like to thank Jerry Ennis for putting that here for us late here. Stay. Mr. Cordes informed the members of the board that we were served for, by the sheet metal workers that thirty-three, of the thirty-four employees of adult probation services have filed to collect, to form a collective bargaining unit under the sheet metal workers. What they basically did is they named us and the Court of Common Pleas as the employer, and we basically are not, so. Mr. Ennis put together a resolution addressing that, so I can read this, it'll be fine. Whereas said request erroneously identifies the Board of Commissioners as the employer of said employees. Whereas the Board of Commissioners deem it necessary and appropriate that they publicly clarify the status of said employees and the role of Board of Commissioners with regard to the effort to form a collective bargaining unit for said employees. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board, the Board hereby declares that it is not the employer of any person employed in Lorraine County Adult Probation Department or by the Lorraine County Court of Common Pleas described in the request for recognition by the sheet metal, air, rail, and transportation workers local thirty-three. The Board has no authority to recognize or oppose the formation of a collective bargaining unit for said employees, and it is inappropriate for the Board to interfere, intervene, or otherwise attempt to influence employees of the Court of Common Pleas with regard to said request. Nevertheless, the Board reiterates and reemphasizes its position previously stated, Resolution fourteen three fifty adopted May two thousand fourteen, that the Board fully supports the right and ability of workers to organize and collectively bargain for fair wages, benefits, and working conditions. That's proper and legal, correct?
Yes.
Mr. Ennis? Okay.
Also moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Kelo.
Aye.
Ms. Gaski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Under the engineer, approve and enter an agreement, Bromhall Engineering and Servings Services in the amount of thirty-eight thousand five hundred to assist with development of plans and specifications to address safety concerns at the intersection of Baumhart Road, County Road fifty-one and Middle Ridge Road, Township Road thirty-two. Authorize engineer to execute documents on behalf of the Board. Prosecutor's approval is due form, and will be paid from the engineer's project accounts.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Actually, this was on our NOAACA agenda last Friday. It was a long day at NOAACA, all the projects being approved. But again, it goes back to straightening out those issues in regards to the safety, correct, Mr. Clyber?
Didn't we talk about this last week?
Yeah, but then it's back here, though, is being finished. It went through NOAACA process, also approval last Friday.
Mr. Kelo.
Aye.
Ms. Gaski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Cordes?
I have no further comments as one.
Mr. Ennis?
Commissioners, I do have one matter of pending litigation that I would like to discuss with you in executive session.
Commissioners report.
Well, happiness and sadness this week. I want to congratulate my nephew and his new bride, Adam Trifletti and Janelle. They got married this weekend on Saturday. It was a beautiful, wonderful, awesome wedding, best I've been to in a long, long time. And then sadly, yesterday I went to the viewing of Tim Mahar, who was a deputy sheriff here in Lorraine County. Died at a very young age, very great family, the whole family I, I know and care a lot about, so my condolences to them. Congratulations to Adam and Janelle Trifletti. End of my report, yeah?
Oh, okay. Busy week. Again, congratulations to Sheffield Lake and Mayor Bring. Fantastic turnout for their parade, as always. Always enjoyment walking through that and talking to anybody.
I saw you passing out candy.
Yes.
Picture.
Oh, they had a picture?
I saw a picture of you on Facebook.
Oh, okay, great. Wonderful. Joe Gee?
Yeah.
Okay. Also, long day Friday at NOAACA. Start early, eight o'clock executive session until ten o'clock board meeting. Lot of projects coming forward. Lorraine County got their first show again, referencing back Baumhart Road, Middle Ridge Road. Going to be a full year finishing that out, and I'm looking forward to moving in next year the presidency of NOAACA. Team Lorraine County this week, we had two meetings. We re-interviewed candidates for the executive director's position. Looks like Thursday sometime we'll have a conference call and see if we can come to some type of a selection of some sort. We had executive committee members this time. I was on the search committee and the, I'm on the executive board there. So hopefully we'll have something announced in the week, next week or ten days and get that organization back on track with new leadership. The Chamber had their quarterly board meeting this week. Tony Gallo's doing a great job. We had a change in how we do the budget, but we're in the black now since the sale of the condo, which we could do that basically at the county level eventually, get rid of our condo over at One Park Place.
Since you brought it up, let's just clarify why we haven't aggressively sold.
The money would go back to the FTA because it was paid for with.
Three years ago, I looked at the depletion schedule for the condo and determined that we had, in a couple of years, if we sold, if we hung on to it and sold it, the proceeds would stay with Transit in Lorraine County. If we had sold it prior to that on the clawback, we would have had to return the money to, to the FTA. I think we have about a year left, and then it becomes an asset of Lorraine County residents fully and completely, and then we can have some final disposition with regard to that condo. I think it's the more effective decision for, for our community.
Without a doubt. Also, was invited to the Lorraine County Farm Bureau's legislative dinner on Monday night. Great turnout, the biggest crowd I've ever seen. Amanda Dennis does a great job putting that together, talking about the issues that the farm bureau wants to deal with, but they had a great information page on what the, the farms in Lorraine County do. It is our number one economic driver, but there's over six hundred, seven hundred and sixty-eight farms, over a hundred and twenty-three thousand acres of farmland in Lorraine County. The average farm size being a hundred and sixty acres. And we've got twenty-four farms that are over a thousand acres, Jim. I mean, I mean, those are large plots of land, so just a lot of.
I think they all belong to the Bourne family.
Yeah.
But agriculture, it, people are surprised. The concentration of residents, eighty-four to eighty-five percent of residents now reside in the urbanized areas in Lorraine County. They seemingly sometimes forget that agricultural commerce is the number one generator of, of revenue in, in Lorraine County and has been. I, I think, I don't think it's ever been surpassed, even when industry was huge.
Right.
In the northern end of the county. So it's an important, it's an important thing for people to remember.
And while they also did a presentation, Western Reserve Land Conservancy talked about the tax incentive conservation easements to keep farms in perpetuity as.
You know, there hasn't been that many of them. There's been a few.
Correct.
But that program came out about a decade ago, and, and it's a really restrictive program. You really have to decide that you want that land to remain undeveloped past, past your generation, and so hopefully they're explaining that program more fully to the folks out there.
I thought it was bad if we did a long time when we first got in office.
Correct. You, you were one of the first ones under the new.
Jarvis, bad it?
Under the new regulation.
Yeah, and when you take a look at poultry farms and the actual sales through the state, it's just, it's a huge industry.
It is.
And does employ a lot of people.
I thought we wanted to put that Commissioner Kelo's backyard. That was the pig farm we wanted to put.
Hog farm.
Actually.
I like pork chops. That's all right, man. I had pork at lunch that day. I had pork chops at the Farm Bureau that night. That's fine with me.
Actually, when you go out to these farms, these huge farms that do it, either hogs, chickens, the technology that they have on there, I mean, you do still have some of the smell, but they're clean, and they do a great job. And if you go in and you take a look at the poultry industry, just for one, because there's a company that wanted to come here, hopefully they still do, they have a lot of information on it and what it brings to the Ohio economy, so.
While we're talking about land, Mr. Cordes and I, we had a conversation yesterday again about the Vassi property.
Yes, we did.
And it was actually in the paper today.
Yes, it was.
And I was concerned that Mr. Heidecker and Mr. Musto are thinking that we should have done something, so we need to have a conversation with them to show whether or not this property would be a, a good retention base, in which I don't think from our discussion, that it would not be, but I think we need to include them in that discussion.
I saw that also, let me, if they so, they so choose, the township trustees could bring that to the solid, I mean, the stormwater.
Absolutely.
Policy committee, because it's from a bottom up. I had that discussion here today, and actually some of the trustees, so Don and I were there. Don was it? Oh, Don was there, and talked about how well the program is working and, and what I had said, so everybody was aware, because we had had Mr. Pichoni in last week, that it goes through the trustees up to the stormwater policy committee to look at those.
Interestingly, Mr. Romancheck and myself were, spent a lot of time in Mr. Pichoni's ditch yes, last night. And every time we walked further in the ditch and more residents came out, I didn't think we were ever going to get off the property. But we went out as promised. We viewed that. We've talked to at least four of the adjacent property owners, had some good conversation with them. I probably should have gave you an update on that, and I apologize for not doing so. The, I have suggested that if Columbia Township is interested in a project, they can work through the grant process with us, which we will. If they think the land has some, some additional purpose that, that may serve the community, they're free to take that land, just as if the county is free to take that land. I, I did look at the parcels. I did talk to each one of you about the parcels. They're not, they're not, they're not contiguous to each other. There's a couple of little ones south and maybe two or three more north, and there's a lot of parcels in between them. And while they lay in the, in a flood plain down there, they're not on the, the creek. So there's some distance from the creek, and the creek runs through people's yards down there. I, I don't know the magnitude of the flooding down there. Obviously, there's been flooding all over the Lorraine County. It's been, it's been one of those the last two years, but that doesn't mean that all of a sudden you start dropping retention bases in all over the place. Plus, it takes more land than, than two subdivision lots to, you know, properly put a retention base on. They could, they could take the property and they could request grant money to do a study of the area to see if it makes some sense over there. I will say that we're working with Columbia Township right now on a project that hasn't gone through the grant process, but needs to be worked, worked together on because the library's flooding out there in Columbia Township adjacent to their park and Mr. Romancheck, and I have come up, we have an engineering, in fact, the engineering proposal's sitting in my stack right here, and we've offered to partner with them if they, they bring a little bit of resources to the table. I read the comments in the paper today with regard to former Commissioner Vassi and, and Mr. Musco, and I, I wish them well doing business together. And, and once, once the township has gained all that property, if they want to put something there, we'll work with them. But I don't see a reason for us to accept that property right now.
Yeah, I received a call on Saturday. They were looking into it. The reporter wanted to do a story on it. I didn't have any information at my house to give them accurate information. And then I received a call from trustee Musco. I actually put Mary Jo Vassi, Ms. Vassi, and Mike together. They had talked because she want, it was in their township. And I was a little surprised to hear that the township trustees wanted to do something with that property. So I asked Mike to go through and provide a request if he wants the county commissioners to look at it again or to go through a different source, so. Hopefully, he'll be reaching out to you, Mr. Cordes.
Oh, gee, thanks.
Well, again, I reiterate, they can go through the stormwater committee and try and submit a project.
We'll, we'll have a conversation with them, but you're, you're right. They can go through the grant process. There's a, we, we haven't released it publicly, but we're working getting it out to the townships now. We're going to have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of grant money made available to the townships coming up this fall. We keep moving the cycle a, a little further back because it's, we, we're learning that the timeliness of these issues and when to bid them and so forth. So there's going to be the potential of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars out there, and that's on top of the already three hundred and eighty thousand. Is it about that, Don? I'm looking, that we've already spent on projects. So I'll, I'll make sure that they understand that, that they can apply for a grant for that.
I noticed, Mr. Williams, in the township trustees minutes, mentioned about raising stormwater fees recently again. There's no discussion coming forward in the near future of that, is there?
There were talks at the last meeting, and then I thought it was with the August or September meeting, we were going to have discussions on that. A letter actually went out to the township officials, I think in December two thousand thirteen.
Yeah, last year.
Talking about it.
We had conversation.
And then at the next meeting, we said that it would be tabled to the next one. So there was a presentation, I think, Don. Jerry, you were at that one. Was Don doing a presentation on the stormwater?
Yes, he was.
Okay. Sorry, the meetings kind of get mixed up sometimes.
Yeah, he was, he was kind of assaulted verbally by Mr. Musco, too. There's a reason why we don't go out there sometimes. So it's, it's really hard to make a presentation, Commissioner, when one of the trustees keeps deriding you.
Yeah, the, the majority of the group was, was respectful. You're right.
I agree.
Mike, you know, he even made me a little uncomfortable where I went and got a soda, so. But, no, there was talk. But, no, there was talk about it, they asked about it, I said, well, you can attend the next, next meeting.
Always welcome public participation.
Yeah.
Did you have a report already done?
Well, you don't.
We all, we all like took over Pez Report.
Okay, not a problem.
All right. Well, first thing, I did get a chance to make it to the Farm Bureau's pork chop dinner, actually, my daughter getting ready to be a freshman in high school, and she's getting into soccer, we got scrimmage against Elyria and that, and, you know, I remember being a freshman in high school, to me, that's one of the most important years, as far as being nervous, and I wanted to be there for my daughter, and as a single parent, and that, I can't make every meeting, but I just wanted to let people know that if I'm not there, doesn't mean that I don't support you, wholeheartedly support the Farm Bureau, but it was something important for my daughter, and that's where I was. And other things going around, just want to clear up some things again, a lot of misinformation. The charter government, you know, I signed a petition on that, that was to put on the ballot. Commissioner Kaylo, you have a petition that you asked me to sign for, the medical marijuana.
I have said that, yes, you did sign that.
Yeah, I signed that, too.
Two of them that didn't make it, maybe your signature isn't locked for them.
Yeah. I have to sign a bunch of other stuff then. But signing a petition doesn't mean that you're for or against something, it means that you're actually giving the people the right to vote. And I know some people are questioning, saying that it's going to take away the right, with the charter government, taking away the right of electing in different offices. But signing the petition, you're not taking that right away, you're just allowing the people to decide if they want that type of government. And for me, and for all of us, that would be a huge cut in pay, benefits, it would restructure government in a, a totally different way. And I signed a petition knowing that, and having faith that the voters would see what the Board of Commissioners does, would see what I do as a county commissioner, and would vote appropriately. So again, I just want to clarify, that's why I signed petitions to go out on the ballot, and to put them on the ballot. Another thing to keep going back, I don't know how this is going on, a lot of rumors that I'm trying to get a lot of the employees to go out to the bars and drink at lunchtime and come back with their shotguns or something, and creating weapons. It's election time, it's absurd on it. We talked about, we had an employee, and we just want to clarify, we had an employee that had a handgun in his car, and under the state law, you're actually allowed to carry, if you have a licensed gun, you can keep your gun in a car if it's locked. And you can do that in government property, it's a change in state law, so individuals who had CCWs, carry permit, when they went to the schools, you're not allowed to carry it on the property, but you could actually keep your gun in your car and go through and do it. And then this whole thing about drinking and guns, I went through a carry concealed weapon class, I'm an avid fisherman, sportsman, love to hunt, and I am a, I like guns, I like shooting guns, I like going out into the woods with friends and doing target practice with AR fifteens. I believe in the second amendment right, but to go around and try to change that and say that I'm going to violate gun safety habits, as far as thinking that you can go out and drink liquor, and then go out and it's a good idea to have a gun, that's not the case. And I, I just think that there are certain people out there, and I know it's a group of people, and again, I know it's election time, they want to go through and manipulate things, but I think it's important to know what the true facts are, and again, I'm not trying to get our employees to carry the guns here while they're on the job. It's a place, if they want to keep it, they can go ahead and store it, and our prosecutors, they have that ability at the Justice Center already. And, you know, I think that the individuals who are looking at this, I know they have some experience in government, they may want to actually get the facts before they go out and spout things. But again, just to clarify it, if you have any questions on it, and the people, if they need any history lessons or any ideas on what local government is, I would be going to help them out and kind of mentor them on that. End of my report.
We'll have our investment advisory meeting next Tuesday at eleven AM, four correspondents.
Move the reading be waived?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kaylo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Public comment?
Anyone wishing to address the board this morning? Mr. Thayer?
Big lawyers, guns, and money.
There it comes.
I know Joe's an avid fisherman.
I love to fish.
Good morning, Mr. Cordes, Mr. Ennis, Commissioners. Joe Thayer, Sheet Metal Air Rail Transportation Local Thirty-three, come up this morning just to say thank you, especially to Mr. Cordes for the cooperation and assistance through the process of organizing the adult probation, and definitely appreciate the support of the board in their efforts to organize. And I'd also like to thank the courts and Mr. Alubi as well for their assistance and clarification as we move through the documents to get where we need to be, so, thank you all, appreciate it.
Thanks for your work.
See you Friday. Anyone else wishing to?
Steak dinner. St. Peter's Steak Dinner AFL-CIO, be there, five o'clock.
I'll make a motion and move it to executive session, as outlined by the administrator and prosecutor.
Second.
Mr. Kaylo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at nine thirty at the Administration Building, two twenty-six Middle Avenue, fourth floor downtown Elyria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners page, then click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.